There we go, Kevin. Great. Good evening, everyone. I want to call the committee of the whole to order. The purpose of this evening is discussion of possible TIF in the downtown footprint and the existing CRAs that are overlapping that. And just as a little bit of background, and this will be reviewed for most everyone, but we had a significant study done looking at the downtown footprint, which is up on the map there. Is that correct, Mr. Sanford? That's the red line, correct?
Yes.
Right. So one of the things that we asked during the last meeting was a projection of the possible revenue that the city would receive if it decided to do a 10-year rolling TIF. And my understanding from Revelly is that that was based upon, that was based upon an anticipated CRA that existed in the same footprints. And that's the overlap, which is CRA number eight, one, and number two as well, for the most part. And both Mrs. Briening and Mr. Sanford will go into this in more detail. So those two are kind of connected, obviously. A CRA, Mrs. Briening will go into. And one of the things that came to my mind is that I originally had some CRA information when I was early on my council tenure, which means that there are four members of council that haven't had any CRA information to any significant extent. So I thought it would be helpful for you all to kind of get a, probably know some of this, but it'll also help me and other members of council who were here years ago, six or seven years ago, also get a refresh in what CRAs, because one overlays on the other. And then adding even more complexity to it is that we also have the possibility that if we do one thing here, there's also the possibility that we have information that could impact on the income tax structure and a job creation grant that was also included with some information in your council packets this past week. So with that, what I will do is if there's any initial questions about the TIF first, do any members of council have questions, at least initially, about the TIF?
Dr. Frye?
Yes.
I'd like to show in the records that I will pushing away from as a property owner in the potential TIF district. Don't want to have conflicts.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Dow. I appreciate that information. And let the record reflect such. Any questions about the TIF? If not, then one of the things that, and I'm not anticipating that we necessarily make any decisions, this is more an informational meeting for all of us. Mrs. Briening, if you could kind of go into some background on CRAs and bring us up to speed a little bit more on how they interact with the TIF, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Frye.
Thank you.
On Friday, emailed everybody a little bit of a summary of what, first of all, what is a CRA. It stands for Community Reinvestment Area. And the way it works is if a property owner purchases a property that, for our sake, we'll keep it easy and make it vacant property, that's the easiest, and that receives the most benefit in a CRA. And wants to put a structure on it, you purchase it with just the land value. Any improvements that you would make to it would be exempt from real estate taxes for the period of abatement that's established in that community reinvestment area. SOMO is the perfect example of this. That property was vacant, the valuation that was zeroed out kind of by the auditor, and then they improved that. We just received the application for the SOMO property for the CRA, and it's in the process of being at the schools right now for their comments. So that will receive a 15-year abatement from property taxes. So that's what a CRA is. There are two types of CRAs, a pre-94 and a post-94. Pre-94 are the most valuable to developers, because there's no requirement in the statute that the schools be compensated for the property tax revenue that they lose during the term of the abatement. That changed in post-94. And I'll put a little asterisk next to that, because there are ways that other communities have used their charter powers and their housing officer to require some sort of contribution to the schools during the term of the abatement. So we'll talk about pre-94 ones first, because we have the most of those. We have originally established, there were eight. In 2013, two of them were merged, so you can still see on the map up there, you can still see the outline of the purple. Eight and two are now essentially one, well, CRA number eight, but there are two CRAs that make up that one area. So that, and if you look at all of those colors up there, those are all the pre-94 CRAs. CRAs can be amended, pre-94 CRAs can be amended twice before you are required to adopt the post-94 rules. We've amended four of our pre-94 CRAs one time. So all of them have at least one amendment left. So in by amendment, you can change the term of the abatement, you can change the percentage you cannot change, but you can change the term. And you can see, it varies, well, ours for one, three, six, and eight, if it's a commercial use, it's a 10-year abatement. If it's residential or mixed use, 15-year. See. Are there any questions on that kind of basic?
Yes.
Yes, you can expand. And also, thanks for asking that question, because I wanted to mention, if you make it smaller, that does not count as an amendment. So for CRA number eight, if we wanted to make it, we could amend that 15 times and make it smaller each time. It's only if you're expanding the boundary that that counts as an amendment, which is kind of interesting.
Just for clarification purposes, the part in the green?
Yes.
Right in the downtown footprint is number eight?
That's correct. Yes, yes. I'm sorry. And the big one down there, the brownish color tan, that's CRA number three. Those are the ones that have been used most recently. Eight has been used by far the most, and three has been used. That's where the McCord Road development is.
Jump in, Mark, with another comment. I want to know that. Having a CRA for the SOMO site, part of our advertising, that was telling that, Cord Road project that Dave Schmidt, that area, that was a vacant lot, for him to move forward, CRA, actually act, property the city owns, Honesylvania, that is, that is in.
Mm-hmm. Thanks. Just a couple of historical informational purposes. The city did own the property the hotel is on and the root building is on, and also where the River Center Clinic is. And one of the terms of the purchase was that they could receive the abatement, but there would be payment made to the schools. So for those properties, there was some sort of compensation worked out. I don't believe that they were necessarily made whole, but there was some consideration made for that. Okay. We have one post-94 CRA, and that's where the new old Slovenia Vet is, on Honesylvania Road, next to the school administration building. It's a smaller territory, but that, in order to take advantage of those, you have to work out an agreement with the schools, and that has to be approved prior to starting construction. So we've actually never had a CRA in that territory. We created it for the vet clinic, but then timing-wise, it just didn't work out. And so, yeah, Dr. Esplin actually did not take advantage of that one. So although it's created, we've never had any applications or agreements with the schools for that territory. So that is kind of the rough overview of how CRAs work and what their benefits are. If you look at the spreadsheet, you can see, we've had, the earliest one that was created in the city was in 1988. And originally, the statute only provided for six years of property tax abatement, so that's why there's all sixes, or mostly sixes. And since we amended the CRAs in 2013, we've only really had one, two, three applications, well, two applications and several applications in one area, which is the McCord Road development. So since the CRA program was created in the city, these are the properties that have benefited from it and taken advantage of it. And if you look at the shaded area, those are all the ones that are in the proposed TIF area.
So part of the reason, thank you, Mrs. Briening, part of the reason that I wanted to bring this to you is the assumption, when we had the projections done for the TIF, the expectation was that the CRA would remain as it is. That's not something that we have to do. We can modify the CRA if we choose to, which would have an impact potentially on the possible development going forward in the future. And let's just say there was a property for years from now that sold in the downtown footprint in CRA number eight. As I understand it, if we don't do anything, that CRA would be allowed, and therefore that property tax abatement would occur for the incremental value. Is that correct, Mrs. Briening?
That's correct.
And for the 10-year period of time, and it's an automatic, they request it, they get it. The question that I have for council, informationally, is do we want to continue that practice for an automatic approval, or do we want to make a modification of some sort and freeze it, or something like that, in the event that we have that sort of development that comes to downtown? We can always turn it on, but that possibility is out there that we can modify or shift our thought process on the CRA in the downtown footprint, because that seems like that's where we're getting, that's where we're getting most of the interest. So that's the reason I wanted to bring that up, because we do have a substantial investment. As you all know, we're looking to make in the downtown streetscape. Obviously, we can use our own resources for that, potentially the TIF revenues if we choose to move forward. But if we see a development of a significant nature, and we have the CRA, once that kicks, they're going to expect and have penciled into their economics the abatement of those property taxes. And my thought process to you all is, should we automatically do that going forward? Do we need to do that going forward in the downtown footprint?
Yes. Mm-hmm. That's correct. They do not. Not in a pre-94, if it exists, they make the application. The housing officer, who is the mayor, has the, can deny it, and then they would appeal it more than likely. But no, council does not get involved in any of the, in any of the CRA's applications process currently. That's to just kind of explain why I included the resolution in the email that I sent out on Friday. City council did back in the mid-'90s, just decided not to accept any more applications in most of the CRA territories. And I just want to do, this is the legislation that they passed, 24-96, that was the legislation that was passed. So that is an option that Mr. Frye was talking about, and that's how we would do it.
So just as a point of clarification, and just kind of repeating what you said also, Mr. Frye, is we can essentially freeze that CRA.
Yep.
And if we find a prospective partner downtown that we wanted to unfreeze the CRA, we could take that under consideration.
Yep, absolutely.
Is it normal for communities to have both a CRA and a TIF in the same area?
Bill and I did reach out to Glenn and ask that question, and he just responded to us, let's see, said, "One has to be set up to take priority over the other." So in this case, the CRA program takes precedence over the TIF. So there are other communities, but he did not give us any specific examples.
Quick answer is yes.
Mm-hmm.
Glenn also clarified that, talked about, asked, "Timing then, especially if there's a CRA." Our area, very nice, larger areas. I was at a, last week with some folks from Toledo, a couple of officials, asked the one, I said, "What about the timing that I'd start the TIF yesterday?" Well, that was very pro-TIF, but again, their area, a lot larger, a lot more area that, I think, this is where, want to get those projections, Mark's talking about, so we know what it was, that also factoring in.
Oh, Leslie, you said the CRA would take priority. Is that because it was here first? Or is that a decision that we just have to put into legislation, and we decide which one to?
I think that's statutory. I think that, obviously, developer's going to want the abatement on the front end, in case they sell it later. So I think that's statutory.
Or here.
Well, first, I wanted to make sure that members of council were refreshed or got more information on the CRA and the potential, because one, we've got a layer cake here. We've got the CRA piece. The TIF revenue estimates are based upon CRA not being modified, but that's something we could potentially do, which would also adjust the TIF potentially and the value of that, because the way that, I understand, Revelly estimated over this 10 rolling TIF, they're estimating a 20% increase, and our portion of that is $800,000 or $900,000, was the projection over the term, if I recall correctly. Correct, Mr. Sanford?
Yes.
Okay.
It was a 10 percent. I don't think he was recommending, or it was.
Right. And then on top of that, the third layer on this is that we also have the possibility of a job creation grant, that if, that specifically says, if you do a CRA, can't do a job creation grant. The concern that I have about that is that, use the example of what just occurred, we sold a piece of property to Mr. Arnos, or a company that he's affiliated with, Old Tire Store. Our understanding is he's about ready, he's going to put a restaurant there, or he's anticipating putting a restaurant there. He's going to build the property, almost certainly ask for the CRA, and then somebody else is going to occupy the space. And theoretically, those people could come in and say, "We want a job development grant," if they met the criteria, because those are two separate organizations. I'm not sure that the one necessarily impacts the other. But again, we don't have, as you could see from the information that Mr. Sanford provided in the packet, there aren't like dozens of these job creation grants that we've been looking at either. So in both cases, we haven't had tons of CRAs, we haven't had tons of requests for job creation grants. So I just want to make sure that if we're going to move forward on a TIF, that we understand what we're getting ourselves into, and that we're making a decision, at least temporarily, to leave the CRA where it sits.
Or the, I don't, I had, threshold is $500,000, restaurant, right, it's more, no. But it'd be hard for them, hard pressed to, or for office setting. Mark asked the question the other day, and Leslie was, as projects, the root building, call it the root building now, but it, a couple different, they got the CRA. a couple different, they got the CRA to build the building. All firm that was there, they've got job creation. And they also got a, that's, and, and work. Last time for job creation grant was helpful, was the former Capital Bank Building, and there was concern. Medica Office Space and built all their headquarters and all the, all those jobs downtown. That building was available, great tenants, you know. Their bank and then their first partner. Venture visionary. They both. They're great employers.
So, Mr. Sanford, when you're talking to entities that are interested in investing in the downtown footprint, how, what's your sense of how critical the CRA is to making this thing pencil out for the investor, looking to make the modifications or build a new facility?
I think especially in the downtown area, it's going to factor proper purpose. One, that, oh. Pull the trigger on some CRA is definitely part of his problem. Life. Other sites around downtown area, if they.
So if, if we do that and we leave the CRA as it sits, does that push us more from a 10- or 15-year rolling TIF to 30-year TIF, which would potentially allow us to pick up the backend of any property tax after the CRA expired?
Yes, I think the 30-year, and I think that was the initial thing, but Leslie and I are going to meet with Glenn probably in a week. So firm up those numbers, so we kind of know meaning of it and what could be. But yes, if, let's say if there was a 30-year in, a 30-year TIF coincide with CRA for Somo, and the second 15.
If we had another project that we'd have, I, I don't, I don't know, to be honest. Yeah.
Five Rogers. Lot of money we're.
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't we wait if one, 10-year or 130-year?
Um, we, yes, I believe, we did ask Glenn that question. He needs to get, he is going, going to work on the projections for those when he gets back into town. But I, I don't believe there's a limit on how many times you can put a TIF over a property, but you just have to identify the project.
I think early, early on in the, yeah, the project that the city would first talked about this and the citizens here and everything. You can have a 10-year at end.
Right.
Other 10. I think we've got to look at the, for the same area. And do that, but I'd like to get the numbers. Here again, get that answer and, yeah, we've got to have a good understanding of everything.
Keep in mind that if, talk about person's property, just commercial building A. If you do a 10-year TIF and the building was worth $100,000, and the auditor comes back over the next 10 years and says, okay, now the building's worth $120,000, and we put another 10-year TIF on, that's, that's, resets the clock. It doesn't go back to the 100, it starts at 120.
Right.
And then it escalates from there.
Right.
You get the compounding effect of the, of the much longer period of time. And you don't know what you don't know. I mean, we had the Somo property and that, and that land available for years, and then suddenly it pops. We don't know what's, you know, what's percolating necessarily behind the scenes that could come up. And that may be the reason why the person from the city of Toledo said, do it tomorrow. Because you don't ever know. In our case, because our footprint's so much more condensed, it may, it may make sense to hold off. That's one of the reasons I wanted to have this conversation, for everybody to be more comfortable when we're moving forward on the decisions.
And also for a 10-year TIF, you can only, you are maxed at 75%. So to get to the 100%, if you have to contribute to the schools, it could make it, it could make a difference.
There's not an urgency for a body to act before we get all the information. Reason for us to jump into some. But I think what Mark wanted us to do is just answer your questions, give you the background on the CRA. All plays into. Now. The other thing I'll bring up too, that Leslie just touched on, that was a key factor, CRA. What year was that? Was it?
What year, would we amend them? 2013.
2013, and that really changed, because we did check other areas and what they were offering. Our, our numbers low of how many offer CRA and change the.
One additional question from, obviously, we had 25 of these over the last, and the majority of them came in 1990 to 1995, based upon the list. Do you anticipate that we're going to see more CRAs in the next five years? I mean, are we rolling through another cycle, Mr. Sanford? Are we just going to see another one or two a year? I just want to make sure that if we're, if we're considering this, making modifications, that we have a, we act. I don't want to have a problem looking for, or a solution looking for a problem.
I think it has to be a substantial project. Our ones may as much sense financially, but it can be definitely. It'll be up to the individual to see if it's going to be worth its while. I think definitely at one or, at, over five years, how many, that's really hard to. Per year.
Reality is, is we're not going to have a lot of opportunities like Somo. We've got the potential for maybe one or maybe two, but those, who knows when that would be. So these smaller projects are, in the short term, more likely to be the case.
With the, to work on Expressway, upgrades on Monroe Street, or Streetscape on Main Street. Potential investment are going to lead to more interest in development.
Any additional questions for Mrs. Brining or Mr. Sanford?
I feel like I've looked at the map a million times, but can you tell me on the TIF, does it come right up to the Expressway? Like, where does it end?
Yeah, we, we haven't amended that since the meeting and carved out that.
I understand.
Maplewood.
Yep.
Yes, it goes all the way to.
To Glass.
BT is that's closed.
Yeah.
Goes right up to there. And sometimes when, when we, we talked to Glenn, he was talking like a specific project. Where, where we're a little bit different. Let's say the city has a specific project. Sell bonds to if a, whereas with our project day and, I'll tell you, we probably, if it was a $3 million project, we'd be. So if, and, and I think it's council's decision, if it's a $3 million Streetscape project, or if is created that we collect $1 million, then that $1 million add, that's, that's substantial, and we definitely consider it. That's how the numbers play. But I want, Leslie and I meet, we'll get hard numbers, different, harder.
And just, as a follow-up to that, what's the timeframe on those conversations? Just, because I don't want this to, because it's easy to, to let things slide. I'm not talking about from your perspective, from my perspective.
Right.
It kind of goes out of, off the side of the, on the edge of the plate a little bit. What's your timeframe for the meeting with Revelly?
We hope before, we'll meet with him before the next council.
Okay.
Look, I mean, he was rejected, look, he had death in his family, that's why it kind of got him out of whack, but. How to get to.
Because part of the conversation, from my perspective, of whether we do the 10-year rolling or the 30-year TIF, still remains the unknown question of what do the pub, what do the schools want? Because if you do the 30-year, you got to work something out with, with the school system, right? If we don't know what they're doing, what their thought process is going to be and what they want, we're, we're kind of looking at one side of the, of the calcula, or the estimate and not looking at the other.
And that's a, he, he brought up the one example that he had worked. That was a situation where their city and the schools are working together to grow. They have more housing, so that you've got school board that's very agreeable. Not saying that ours is not, but there's, there's not that. Them participating. But got to lay all that out, so we exactly where they stand, so they know. Already had conversations, part of one of the meetings when.
Any other questions from?
Mr. Fry, I guess I'm, I'm on board with the data, I guess. I'm more of a data-driven person, so I'd, I'd like to see, you know, the impact of each option. Would that require another, be of the whole meeting, and once we have that, or?
Not necessarily. I mean, or a much, much more short duration, once we have the information, you know, we could, we could react to it from, from there. But typically, I, what I'd like to do is, we're coming out of the COVID era, hopefully, timeframe is, is to have more, you know, meetings, not necessarily committee of the whole, but more meetings in general of, of the committees for council, so that we can be more active on this kind of stuff. And so I would probably look to do another committee of the whole, although this one in my mind would probably be much shorter. You know, maybe 30 minutes before council or, or whatever.
I, I anticipate, Marcus, that prepare a report after this meeting. Right now, if, think of other questions, I think we've got a lot of them, but if you think of anything else, let us know. Have a question on how this is going to work and get that in.
Mr. McCann?
How many existing CRAs do we have today?
Total? How many active?
Active.
Um, two, or, there's two currently that we have, I would say pending. And then there are several in the McCord Road property that are residential. All of those residential property in the Dave Schmidt Development. They all made application for them.
I think you're talking past each other. I think the answer to your question, Mr. McCann, is that there's eight or nine actual CRAs.
I'm sorry.
That the city has. Right? What Mrs. Brining was saying is that right now, the ones that are being utilized.
Yeah.
There's only a couple of those.
Utilized is, is the key.
Yep.
So how much are, are we losing, or how many would affect?
Right, exactly. It's really, for the TIF, it's really only CRA, the area, the green area up there is where eight is. And the only active CRA that we are going to have will be the Somo. Mm-hmm, in that area. The other one, the other big, obviously, is CRA number three, which is the tan color up there. And that's where the Dave Schmidt project is.
Wouldn't he own it, some others, on ourselves? Be interesting about the existing one with that Ford Road site. Haven't probably, about how many units? Well, if there's 50, it's not a situation where, as like in Somo, that goes to the developer, one entity. Dave Schmidt, homeowner, has the CRA. Next, it's, it's like 50 different little CRAs within the. They, they fill out the paperwork, Leslie has to process it and talk, send it down to the auditor and get it all coordinated and all.
One question for that, regardless of whether it was Somo or John Smith, who owns the property on McCord Road somewhere. If they sell the property, they flip it. Does the CRA flop with it? Can the tax abatement go with it?
Mm-hmm, yeah, they get it.
That's what I thought you were going to say, double checking. I thought so, but I wasn't sure.
That was, it, it, there was definitely some misunderstanding. Got a lot of calls, because advertisement for that, put on that tax abatement, got all these calls. What does that mean? About, able to answer all them. Got to kind of down to a process as each property sell and.
If, if as what you stated, we can amend or extend.
Mm-hmm.
Why would we want to do that?
Extend the, well, there's, you can't make it indefinite. You can, you're subject, still subject to those statutory limitations, amend the boundaries.
Well, no, the, the term.
The term. We did before, we went in, when the, all of the legislation was initially passed, the terms of the, the term of the abatements were six years. And then they increased to 10 and 15 years. Yep, just to encourage development and make it more enticing for people to invest.
But those would be for new ones, not the existing.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much. There's nothing else to come before the committee of the whole. Can I have a motion adjourned? Do I have a second? Moving second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried, and we are adjourned at 7:15. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.